Okay, hello everyone. We are live on Facebook, so I know that is all set. We are 6:05. I wanted to give people a few extra minutes to join, I think we are there. So at this point, at 6:05, I would like to call this meeting officially to order. As we do, even though we're distant, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So feel free to mute your video. And you can mute your audio, I'll keep mine on, so they can say the Pledge of Allegiance song with me, but here we go. I'm gonna stand as I do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
The Republic. Alright, Marie, can you please do a roll call?
See you, Manley. Trusty altar. Yeah. Can you hear Ryan?
Here.
We are having a little bit of feedback issues, so if you guys could mute your mics, or if you're on the phone, mute your phone, I forgot exactly how to do that. And appreciate it.
And also President Attorney Gilchrist.
I was here as well, Marie, I didn't.
Yeah. Gotcha, Craig, the only one I see is Kevin. You may not be in yet.
Somebody want to reach out to Kevin and make sure he knows?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna text him right now.
Alright, awesome, thank you very much. Okay. Alright, so, just a quick reminder of how we handle online meetings, so they work best, please, when you are not speaking, mute your audio. You are encouraged to use headphones, which is the ideal situation, with a microphone, so there's no feedback loop created, and if there are two or more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, make sure to only have one person's audio on, or you will get the feedback loop. Alright, I am looking for a motion to open a public hearing regarding the Comprehensive Police Practices Review Committee's report.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily, a second?
Second.
Alright, okay, we are officially in public hearing at 6:08 PM. I know we have a bunch of members of the committee on, so again, thank you for your work. I have brought the slides that I used in the previous meeting here as well, in case anybody wants to speak or review those, these are the same slides we had last time. Does anyone on the committee want to just speak briefly before I open up the floor to anyone who'd like to speak, ask questions, or make comments?
This is Doug's side, I just think we're pleased to present the report, we're pleased to be open to public comment ideas. One of the things we're hoping is going to come out of this, and we can talk about this later, is the appointment of a review board. And that would be at a later date, I presume, that members would be appointed, and that would be a process that would need to be established on folks that might be interested in serving on that review board.
Alright, thank you. While this is going on, I'm gonna do my best on my other computer here to just keep an eye on social media, so if anybody has questions or comments on the Facebook livestream, I'll be able to answer those as best as I can. Alright, at this point, I'll kind of keep the slides going gradually in the background. But at this point, if anyone would like to speak up and share, whether it be someone on the committee, someone in the community, or board member, the floor is now open, I just need you to state your name and street address, as we do in all public meetings, and this is a reminder that we do record all of these and post them later as part of our initiative to have everything online and transparent. Would anyone like to speak?
Hey Rob, it's Craig.
Hi Craig.
So, I wanted to thank everybody on the committee, I enjoyed reading the report and support mostly, I would say probably everything in there. I thought tonight, since we're gonna be here for half an hour, and I want to make sure people get a chance to comment, but if we're gonna be here, the one thing I would like to maybe go through is the recommendations in the report and see if we can lay out, you know, what are the next steps for each of those action items, because if we accept the report, we accept ownership of getting those action items done, the ones that are up to us, so if we have time tonight, maybe we can lay out our thought process for that.
I like that, and I agree with everything you said, I think the report was really well put together. But it is also really gonna be important, the execution is done in a good, proper, thorough way, otherwise, it's just a really nice report. We want to do better than that, and the report deserves better than that, I thought they did a really nice job on this.
Well, we have all the experts here tonight, so I figure that'd be a good time to do it. But that can be at the end.
Alright, we will come back to that, Craig, we get the floor remains open for anyone who'd like to speak. If you would like to speak, you can unmute yourself and state your name and share whatever you'd like to share. Give it a minute too. Another option we can do is I can bring the report into the presentation, and we can literally talk through the conclusions and recommendations. And that may work as a jumping point for us, Craig, to talk further about implementation. Andy, do you want to take a minute and just explain the process that the governor laid out, and the board's options tonight, whether we officially approve the report, or if we decided to wait, what our window would be?
Sure, so as the trustees and the committee members know, last year, the governor did adopt Executive Order 203, requiring every municipality in the state to review their, for every municipality that maintains a police force or police department, to review the policies, practices, and procedures of that police force for purposes of reform, review, improvement, with particular emphasis on policing techniques and reduction of any unnecessary aggressive police enforcement, and also a review for bias in terms of any racial biases that may be included within the police department practices or procedures, and to try to address ways to eliminate any potential bias. So, the village did create the committee, they've worked very, very hard for several months and have prepared the draft report. The Governor's Executive Order does require that the report be available for public review and comment. This report was presented to the Board of Trustees on March 9th. It has been available for village residences, residents to review, provide comments. They could provide comment in writing to the committee members, to the Board of Trustees. Tonight's public hearing is likewise for the purpose of receiving any public review comments, questions, ideas for the report that is currently in draft form. What the Board of Trustees does need to do is adopt a plan, either through local law or resolution, as required under the Governor's Executive Order, and confirm with the State Budget Office that the village has completed that task, has adopted a plan pursuant to Executive Order 203, and in compliance with the procedural requirements, and most particularly the public review and comment, all by April 1. The, in this case, the Board of Trustees is proposing to act through resolution. It would make the draft plan that has been prepared by the committee, the final plan to be adopted by the Board of Trustees. That resolution and the plan would then get submitted online to the Division of Budget at the State, honor before April 1st. If the board chooses to tonight, the board can act to finalize and adopt the plan that's been prepared by the committee. It does have some additional time prior to April 1, in the event any public comment was received that the board wanted to further consider. If there are any changes that would need to be made to the report before it was finalized. But the timeframe here is the board must act and adopt its final plan honor before April 1, which then gets submitted online to the Division of Budget. Governor's Executive Order does indicate that if the municipality fails to complete that work by April 1, then the state may be in a position to withhold state funding to the municipality. So again, the purpose of tonight's public hearing was to comply with the requirement of the Executive Order, and allow the public to review and provide any comments on the draft plan. Once that public hearing has been held, the Board of Trustees will then need to consider adopting a final plan honor before April 1. Does the board have any questions on procedure?
Thirty minutes open on the public comment session tonight?
Now I'm gonna put my general municipal hat on, if I can. As a general rule, a board is not under any specific timeframe during which a public hearing must remain open. I know it's been the practice of the Board of Trustees in the past to keep a public hearing open for a half an hour while it conducts its regular meeting. But I will tell you, neither under the village law nor under the general municipal law, is there a requirement that a public hearing on a proposal be kept open for a minimum period of time. It's not unusual for boards to open a public hearing, allow it to remain open only for a very short period of time, and in the event there's no public comment sought to be submitted, you can immediately close the public hearing, so there's no requirement to have a thirty minute minimum on the public hearing, it's been the practice of the board in the past, but not legally required.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy, much appreciated. I'm just giving another opportunity for anybody to speak up, if you would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this report. The floor is yours, unmute your mic, state your name and street address, please. Must be signs that it's a solid report that had no public criticism to offer.
And Rob, if I could, to confirm on the record whether any members of the Board of Trustees or the committee, if they have received any comment directly from members of the public in the past couple of weeks, if those could be noted for the record. If not, then we'll note for the record that there was no public comment received by the trustees or committee members in the prior two weeks.
Doug, your mic is muted, as if you're trying to talk, bud.
There's none that I've been aware of, or any committee members are aware of. Just prior to the presentation of the report, though, there was, through the web, we did get some communication from a from a group in the village, and we actually included their comment and their recommendation that was around courage, bike and foot patrols, that was something that was recommended from the community during the process.
Thank you, Doug, anyone else? While we have some time, and I do like the idea of continuing with the thirty minutes, just to be standard with kind of how we normally operate. I think right now, I'm sharing the actual report that's online available on the villageresidents.com website, do you guys see the committee recommendations here? Craig, you'd talked about stepping through the process a little bit, and making some future plans on this. Let's just review real quickly what the committee recommendations were. I would zoom in more, but then I won't be able to see you, or I won't be able to see all the words on the screen. Can you guys still read this from your screens at home?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna come down and talk about the bullet points. Number one, the committee recommends that the village and/or the department initiate and implement new recruiting programs intended to encourage more hiring of local residents, and also to diversify the police candidate pool. The villageresidents.com police department is constantly seeking talented and service-oriented people to join the department and assist in providing the best service to the residents and community, its residents and businesses, in order to obtain the best suited and most diverse candidate pool possible, the committee recommends that the village develops and/or continues recruiting strategies such as job fairs, internship programs, school outreach programs, and most importantly, adopts new strategies such as fully utilizing social media and social media announcements to attract as many local residents and diverse candidates as possible. If anyone wants to speak up or interject, please feel free, otherwise I will keep reading. Number two, the committee determined that the primary goal, the people whose falls want a police department to accomplish is to keep the community safe while treating all citizens equally and with dignity, honor, and respect. The committee therefore recommends that the village continues to provide its officers with training in subjects as crisis intervention, de-escalation techniques, mental health training, safe defensive tactics, use of force training, and training in the identification, investigation, prosecution, and prevention of hate crimes. Additionally, bias and diversity training should be held on an annual basis. Chief, you're on the line, correct?
Yes, I am.
Awesome, can you briefly speak to what sort of required trainings happen on an annual basis? And then maybe that is a launching point into what additional trainings may be out there, or may have emerged, especially in light of the Governor's Executive Order and the likely high demand for this type of training, and maybe something that we build in, maybe even build into our budget for the next fiscal year, if that's something that we did, so take it away, sir.
Short of our normal training, firearms training, the use of force training, we've implemented the we're gonna be doing a training in drug addiction that'll be coming up. We also are looking at our normal training of workplace violence. And we are now going to be putting in training for hate crime investigations, along with some additional training for that the committee is looking at for, there's one that we're looking at now for down at the Booking Institute, which Doug will probably explain later on, if not tonight, at another time. So we're keeping in touch with DCJS on any updated training that they're advising us to do. As that training comes in, we'll forward it over to the committee and decide whether we're gonna implement it, or which way we want to handle it, but those are the basic trainings that we're looking at at this particular time.
Thanks, Chief, I'm a little slow to unmute myself here.
We also, this is an important one too, and I failed to put it down, I'm sorry, is the mental health training that we're dealing with. That's constantly updating, we sent one officer already to a mental health training class, and Troy PD has indicated that we're putting another one on next month, and I've reserved two spots for two officers to go to that. At this time, the officers haven't been chosen to take because of being a part-time, some of these officers are already going through it through their other department. As they go through that kind of training, I require that they send out to us their certificate, so we can put their personnel file here, just so we can keep track of the type of training they're receiving as well.
Alright, great, thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments for the board, or anyone else? Chief, I think in light of this, if there's an extra expense related to some additional training, especially training that may be out of the norm, but is supported by this report and this initiative, I think, you know, the sympathetic board would be in favor of that, so feel free to ask.
I put in, I put into our, into our budget, I budgeted, I believe, three thousand dollars for training. That includes our firearm training that we do twice a year. So I think I've cushioned some money in there to handle some of this training, but you're correct, I may have to come back to you at a different time for additional money for any training that the board and the committee feels that is needed.
Alright. Anyone else like to speak up before I continue on with the conclusion points? Feel free to interject and interrupt me anytime, I'm just gonna continue on on the conclusion points. Number three, in keeping with the committee's primary goal of community safety, are supportive of the current finding for the police department. And a reduction is not recommended, I don't know if they're funding, sorry, I missed where that funds is small there for some reason. In keeping with the committee's primary goal of community safety, the committee is supportive of the current funding for the police department, and a reduction is not recommended, which I'm also in favor of not lowering funding for the police department, I think, for the trending is right on, I think, greater awareness to what is going on, and what some of the problems are that we're facing on a regular basis, and how things are always moving and changing, I think that's right on. Number four, the committee also recommends that the Who's the False Police Department continue to periodically review policies and procedures to ensure best practices are achieved. The committee also found that the data collection is crucial to reviewing the effectiveness of policies and fairness. The committee therefore recommends that racial data, along with other pertinent information on each traffic stop and police interaction with the public should be tracked and analyzed on an annual basis, so that any negative trends will be promptly identified and remedied. I think that's another really strong point, and that's something that will take a little bit of time to work out and initiate a process to maintain that data, but I think it is very important. I will continue on, but again, feel free to interrupt at any point. If I received a question, can you explain a little bit more about what goes into mental health training, what that entails?
The, excuse me, the mental health training is a week, is forty hours of classroom being held, it was held at Hudson Valley, the last one, was brought in by trained personnel to deal with mental health issues. We've also brought up, and we opened up to the village, I think it was a year ago, two years ago, we did a mental health training for our officers, as well as the village board or the village personnel that we held over at the school, that was, I believe, an eight-hour training session that we put in. So, that type of training that we're sending our officers to is a forty-hour week training, and any additional mental health training that comes up, we now have Unity House here, we're gonna be looking at some training that they have, or some guidance that they can provide to us on how to deal with the mental health issues. We're experiencing a number of cases with the mental health, and we transport to Samaritan Hospital. So, officers have to stay with that patient from the beginning to the end, it's very difficult to have the ambulance transported unless there's a physical injury to the person for their safety, as well as the safety of the, of the individual, so we're learning how to handle those individuals from start to finish, from the beginning that we may have to transport in a police car, how to safely transport them in the car, and how to safely get them in the car, and how to safely get them out of the car once we arrive at the hospital, so it's constantly whatever new training comes in, we're looking at it and we're implementing it.
Awesome, thank you, Chief. Again, floor remains open for anyone who'd like to speak, ask questions, submit comments. Unmute yourself, and feel free to ask. I keep talking through these points here, point number five, in order to assist the village forward, the operas a operationalization of the above recommendations. The committee strongly recommends the immediate creation of a civilian review and reform board, CRRB, with accompanying authority to perform its tasks as detailed below. The makeup of the CRRB shall be as follows, one, A, the CRRB shall consist of three to seven voting members appointed by the village board, with a preference for an odd number of appointed members where feasible. Each voting member shall be appointed for a term of one year, and may be reappointed with no consecutive term limits. At the discretion of the village board, voting members must have strong connections to the village, such as residency, business operations, and/or professional and social services. B, additional non-voting members of the CRRB shall include the village clerk and the village deputy mayor. These individuals shall serve in an advisory and support capacity. In addition, while not formally a member, the chief of the Who's the False Police Department, the chief of police, shall be included in meetings and discussions of the CRC, CRC, it's supposed to be CRRB, as if he or she were a member, thereby affording the CRRB the opportunity to benefit from the chief of police's knowledge and insights, except in instances when the CRRB determines that inclusion of the chief of police in any particular meeting or discussion would hamper the CRRB. in any particular meeting or discussion would hamper the CRRB's ability to engage in a full and frank discussion on any particular subject of importance. Point C, a formal confidentiality agreement should be prepared and approved by the village board with the assistance of the village attorney. This will serve, ensure appropriate confidential treatment of matters raised and discussions had among the chief of police and the members of the CRRB. All voting and non-voting members of the CRRB, as well as the chief, they shall be required to sign such confidentiality agreement upon appointment. As a member of the CRRB, D, the CRRB will deter its chairperson and vice-chairperson, who shall serve one-year terms with no consecutive term limits by majority vote. E, the chief of police will notify the CRRB chair within 24 hours upon recipient, receipt of all complaints toward the HFPD. And the chair shall notify the remaining members of the board as soon as process, practicable thereafter. Before I finish off the last few points, I really appreciate all of the scenarios and recommendations in the formation of this body. I think this body is a really good and strong idea. And I think, Andy, you were talking before about the possibility of making, administering this through a, a village law. The, the more I, I look through this, this is, there's a lot of details in here and a lot of really good recommendations. I would like, in my mind and board, feel free to, to, to speak up on this or agree, disagree. Anyway, I would like to vet this out further in future meetings and come up with an agree on this, oh, this hierarchy. Because I think this would be a very important tool for what we are trying to do, what this report is trying to do. So let me open that up to the trustees' thought. And Andy, I don't know if you want to voice up on if it becomes a stronger thing, if we make it a, if we improve it through village law.
Rob, I, I guess I have a question. Andy's going to answer it probably anyways, but I'll ask it first. What, if we don't do this by law, what would be the other option? I mean, we're committing to doing this by accepting this report. So I guess I would like to hear what, you know, what, what are our tasks that are, are going to be to create this? I think that's important and I'm sure Andy will fill us in. And then secondly, the, the staffing of this board, one, it will, will hopefully not be a challenge. And two, get an early plea in for the people who put this together and all their hard work. You know, tho- those would be the names that would first come to, come to plead our case with. So anyways, I'll be quiet. I, I'm interested to hear from Andy how, how we would enact this and what would be our next steps and maybe our, if we can talk about our timing.
Well, I'll jump in, Craig. I, I would like to give some more consideration and quite frankly, research to the procedure. These types of boards have been established in other police departments statewide. It'd be good to examine the methods, the procedures that they used. I do not think this is limited to just preparation of a local law. In fact, what's in front of you this evening is a resolution to approve this plan as the final plan for the village. So that's another procedural mechanism. I want to get a little bit more information on how the boards operate. Are they similar to other municipal boards that have some, not some, some real sense of autonomy? Then Craig, you're correct. There would need to be specific kind of establishment guidelines, mission, what they do, how they meet, things of that nature. But again, th- this is somewhat new. And I would like the ability to do some research on other municipalities and how these have been created and how they operate. And I think they should be discussed at future meetings and, and move forward timely, of making sure that, that we do our homework on options for the village to consider. I do want to look at things like membership terms, potential removal of members. I'd like to take a little bit of time and look at this confidentiality issue. It would be a public board. I'd like to, to look at how the operations of a board mesh with any potential open meetings law requirements. So there are some things to look at. These are all wonderful ideas. We want to make sure we have those items, particularly procedural items fleshed out. And we can talk about those at upcoming meetings.
Just one, one follow-up question. Andy said, say we, we do all this and all of a sudden we find that a CRRB is inappropriate for the village of Housen Falls and we change our mind. Is there a process for us to revise our plan?
Well, that, that's exactly the type of thing I'd like to look at because I want to make sure procedurally, you're right. I mentioned before about removal of members. One step further than that is determining that the board as a whole is no longer appropriate for the village. And the procedure on abolishing the board or going in a different direction. I just want to make sure that all those procedural issues are fleshed out before the board does embark on creating the review board.
This is Trish Blumer. One suggestion that I have that we might consider, obviously, some of that will take some time. It will also, the results of that research, Andy, will obviously have some implications. Or perhaps the size of the board, how the board is appointed, as you said, term limits, removal provisions. If you're looking at the recommendations, and this is all together in recommendation number six, the sub A through sub E of that section doesn't necessarily have to be included in this initial approved plan. Those are the provisions that set forth the specific requirements for the committee. I think that if, or for the review board, pardon me. I think that if, if we wanted to give a little, build a little bit more leeway into this plan to give the board a little bit more time, the village board and in the town, as the village attorney, a little bit more time to consider how exactly they want this board to look. I mean, there are also questions you haven't noted yet, Andy, but that come up in terms of, will they have subpoena power? Will they have investigatory power? Or are they a purely advisory board? Those are types of things that we've already talked to the labor attorney about. And there are implications for, for collective bargaining agreements between the police department and the officers as well, that will, that will be implicated by the decisions on matters like that. So if you were to take out the A through E, which kind of itemize specifics of what the board will look like, but then you could leave in part F, which basically more taught, more focuses on the areas that we think it would be important for a board of whatever constitution to focus on, you might be able to move forward with the plan quickly, but still leave time after April 1st for these important discussions.
Thanks, Trish. That's absolutely right on. And I would also assume, on, on top of everything you just said, that NICOM will probably have recommendations on this as municipalities across the state start to form these, these groups. I would not even be surprised if it became built into maybe municipal or village law, just like the zoning and planning boards are, are built and dictated by that. But there's no question that there's a, there's a need for the board, but there's also a lot of additional questions that have to be vetted out. And Trish, you highlighted a handful of them. Absolutely right on. So thank you. Would anyone else like to speak up regarding this? Comments, criticism, questions, anything? Open the floor one last time.
And this is Doug Sauer. I, I support what Trish was saying. I'm a little bit concerned that this can't be a four, five, six, seven-month process of trying to figure this out. We did look at other, other departments, other charges and saw a bit of a range that was out there. But one, one possibility, particularly because policies and procedures is a major piece that needs to be handled relatively quickly. If there's a way that, and we haven't talked about this, that the way that the committee can continue as an advisory group to the chief on policies and procedures and that work can continue, just in a very limited way, that will keep that momentum going and, and allow us to, to keep improving without being official review board until, until all the research and authority is, is finalized.
So Doug, you're, you're thinking of, in a sense, the board continues to do some, some more advisory work while the village board looks into legality and, and, and sort of finalizes this?
Yeah, remain a committee, just, yes, purely as advisory to continue to work it's been doing and working with his chief. Yes.
Andy, would that require a, a board decision? Or can we just basically, as a, as a board, say, we support that, keep going?
The committee was formed, or if you will, ratified by the board trustees for the purpose of complying with the executive order and preparing this plan. So I do think that that would, to extend the work of that committee, it would need board approval.
Okay.
I, and Mayor, I'd like, as the chief of police, would like to go on record that this makeup of this board has been very valuable to the operations of, of this department. And to me, I mean, if it could continue as an advisory board until the, the village board makes their appointment, I'd greatly appreciate that.
All right. I was gonna.
That being, that being, I'm certainly, I'd be ready and willing to put that motion on the floor right now because I think we need to keep this group together. And I mean, what, what Trish and Doug and Jason and Dave and, and Marie have done, and you know, I've done very little input. I've pretty much been in the liaison and had not a lot of input to, to offer. And I think these guys have done an outstanding job. And we, we remiss if we didn't get that motion on the floor to let them continue to serve at this committee until it's finalized, that we find out all the questions that are unanswered.
Do you want to offer the motion, maybe set it up for like an additional six months or something like that?
Sure. If, if Andy, you, you think that should be enough time for us to get the questions answered?
Bobby, in my opinion, the answer is yes. And if you put a timeframe on the committee to serve in the advisory capacity until such time as these procedural issues are addressed and discussed by the board and a civilian review board can be established more formally and move forward, I think that's a very good idea. I do think six months is more than enough time. I could be proven wrong, but initially I do think six months is more than enough time.
Well, I definitely think that based on the amount of work that was done in such a short period of time by this group, I think that, that definitely we should be all getting answers within, you know, six months. That'd be great.
So Bobby, are you offering that motion right now?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Second.
Second. Kevin, Craig, somebody?
So just a clarification. The motion could be to extend the committee with, to allow them to focus on recommendation number four. Right? Because that's actually broken out separately from forming the CRRB committee. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm posing that as a question.
Number five, Craig, for the procedures, you mean?
I'm, I'm gonna let Rob.
It's five. Yep.
Right. That's to, that's to recommend the review board. But if you go back one recommendation to number four, is the procedure recommendation. I thought.
No, four, four is.
Let me interrupt for a second. You've got, you've got a outdated, slightly outdated version of the report up on this live screen. The version of the report that, that was put out on the website, the finalized version and that is available, has been available in hard copy as well for the last two weeks, is a version that has much fewer, many fewer typos than the one you were looking at tonight.
My apologies.
It, it's substantively, it's pretty much there, but it's different. And their bullet point numbers are different on the two. There was one extra recommendation added, which is why you guys are a little bit, you know, crossing lines on the five versus the six. So in the final version of the report, it is recommendation number six is to create a civilian review board to help operationalize all of the recommendations that we, that were above. So number five was the one, the recommendation that related specifically to reviewing the policies and procedures. However, having said that, one of the things that we've been involved in, in addition to just reviewing the policies and procedures, that I think is an important thing to, to make effective right away as well, or to continue, is advising on any complaints that come in. I don't think there's any reason to waste any time on allowing us to help assist the, the chief in handling complaints and, and liaising with the community if there are issues that they want to raise. We're happy to do that work. And, and it's been, it's been something that I think is, is an important outlet for the community. We've already received, been in the process of handling some of those feedback issues and comments as they come in. So rather than just make this about the procedures and policies manual and updating those, which is very important and we're well on the way to doing and would like to continue. I also think that it would be helpful to include in, in this motion, you know, if I'm, if I can be so forward, advising the, of the chief on any, on any community complaints or comments or concerns that come in.
Yeah, I, I would be, this is, I, I would be supportive of that, very supportive of that. And I also think even as the research and procedures are being done for review board, the committee can serve as a sounding board. I mean, there's lots of discretion here. So when you look at the requirements and whatnot, there will still need to be some decisions that's going to be made about how you want to shape it. And again, the committee can be an advisory, serve an advisory role for that.
Trustees, does that make sense to everybody? Is everyone in agreement with that?
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Andy, do we need to revise the motion to reflect that?
You should, with emphasis that the committee would remain in an advisory role for that limited period of time. And I would presume until such time as the formal civilian review and reform board could be advanced.
Bobby, you want to strike your initial motion and so move what Andy just said?
Yes. Yes, I do. I'll strike my initial motion and I'll present what Andy just said as my motion.
All right. And are we, are we setting a time limit? Are we just basically contending with the, with as much time as needed to work out procedures, Andy?
I think the earlier discussion was for six months, which would be an emphasis to get the research and discussion with the board of trustees done in a timely manner. So I think it's a good idea to put a specific timeframe on.
All right. Bobby, six months.
I'm in favor of that. And, and if, and, yes, but if we have to go longer, Andy, we can always vote another, pass another resolution to extend that period, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's.
All right. So thank you, Bobby. The motion is on the floor. We need a second. I think that was Craig. Further discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor from trustees?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? All right. Hearing none. Motion carries. I'm going to give one last shot for anyone to speak up.
Can I make, I'm sorry to keep talking.
Fire away.
I think that if you guys want to move, since there haven't been any comments or suggestions other than the, the quick one that I suggested to, on a quick way to modify this report and then adopt it as the plan. If you guys want to avoid having to call another meeting in the next six days, what, what I would suggest to you is that we move to strike from the report recommendations. Recommendations, the recommendations, the paragraphs, sub A through sub E, under number six on page, pages nineteen to twenty, and otherwise propose that the, that the board consider adopting this plan.
Andy, do we need to strike it? Can we adopt it and just understand that we, that we're going a slightly different direction than what that part of the document recommends?
No, I agree with Trish. It should be, the report should be amended so that those provisions are struck, because those are the very provisions that we're going to be doing some research on.
All right.
Right, I think.
Trish, I want to reference that. What exact point in page? I want to see if I have the right copy here, and I'll share that.
Sure. If you look at the final report on page, starts on page nineteen, number six. The paragraph begins, "In order to assist the village with the oper- operationization of the above recommendations, the committee strongly recommends the immediate creation of a civilian review and reform board with accompanying authority to perform its tasks as described as detailed below." And then I would stop it there and delete the proposed makeup of the CRRB is as follows. And then you have an A through an E. I would delete all of that, and I would go right in and make the next paragraph of paragraph six. What now is F. So the primary tasks should include the following, and then continue with the rest of the recommendation from there.
All right, I'm sorry, I don't have a digital copy of that for some reason, but I followed exactly what you stated here on my hard copy. And my apologies for people at home who are trying to use a digital copy, and may have the old draft one like I do.
Essentially, we're deleting the structure defining.
All right, and that was point number six?
Six sub A through six sub E would be deleted.
Mayor, I have a number of copies that are what Trish is referring to, so I will, you're across the hall, so. And you're gonna become back over to see me, so I'll give you the better, the other version of it.
No, I have one right here. Yep. So, sub A to sub E, but sub F remains end, correct?
That's correct, but it would become sub A.
Okay. All right.
The only other change, instead of having the sentence leading into the sub F being the last sentence of current paragraph six, so the last sentence currently says the proposed makeup of the CRRB is as follows. Delete that sentence and replace it with, "The primary tasks of the CRRB should include the following." So in other words, you'll use the text of sub F in place of that last sentence of six.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, last chance for anyone to speak up, and then we'll progress on with, I think what sounds like is the approval of this report. Okay, hearing no more comments, I am looking for a motion to close public hearing. Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Craig. Bobby, thank you for the second further discussion. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, none. So we have officially closed the public hearing. Now, I have. We had a resolution at the ready, which I'm trying to access right now. In case we wanted to, as a board, move and approve this, the resolution obviously will need to be amended slightly with the changes. Andy, can I, in the resolution, add a point that explains what Trish was requesting us to do that we all agreed with?
I've got another suggestion. If you could put the resolution up, do you have one?
I do. Let me share that real fast. Bear with me for one second. Share the screen. Okay, so this is the resolution, correct, Andy?
Correct.
Let me zoom in a bit, so we can read it a little bit more clearly. Okay.
Want me to generally discuss these recital clauses?
I was, I wanted to know if you wanted me to change anything before I go through it, or we can just.
Not in the recital clauses.
Okay. So this is the resolution that would adopt the Village of Housick Falls Comprehensive Police Practices Review Committee Report pursuant to Executive Order 203. Andy, if you would, please summarize the whereas clauses.
Yep, so in the recital clauses, it just goes through that the governor did adopt Executive Order 203, requiring the municipality review policies, practices, and procedures. That the committee was created, that the committee did meet on a number of occasions, thirteen meetings, reached out to the community, received community reviewed all the Housick Falls practice, Housick Falls Police Department policies, practices, and procedures. And they did develop the draft plan, which you've just reviewed. And that the committee presented its report to the Board of Trustees on March ninth, that the board did schedule the special meeting and public hearing for this evening for purposes of review deliberation and receipt of further public comment on the committee report. The special meeting and the public hearing was duly noticed, published, and posted that you held your public hearing this evening and that it was closed. There was one comment received on Facebook that was discussed and considered that the executive order does require that the plan being considered be available for public review and comment, which has now been complied with. And that you look to move forward and approve the plan through this resolution. So that's basically the recital clause is going through the executive order requirements, the procedure establishing the committee, the work of the committee in preparing the plan, the presentation of that plan to the Board of Trustees, being available for public review and comment, holding the formal public hearing this evening, and you're ready to act upon the plan and adopt a final plan. My suggestion on an edit would be now in the body of this, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls in special session duly convened as follows. Number one, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls hereby adopts and ratifies the report of the Village of Housick Falls Comprehensive Police Practices Review Committee dated March ninth, 2021. And then if we could insert, as amended and attached here too. And my suggestion would be to have the report as was discussed with that section six A through E deleted. That then becomes the final report, and it would simply be attached to this resolution. And Rob, as we've discussed, this does need to be filed with the state, and that the state would receive the copy of the resolution with the final plan attached. So again, the resolution would be adopting and ratifying the report of the committee dated March ninth, as amended and attached here too, and then in compliance with Executive Order 203.
I would put as the final report back in there that you just deleted before the parenthetical.
Oh, yes, Rob, that has amended and attached here to comma. As its final report.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Take out that parenthetical, not the whole thing. Take out the parentheses. We don't need those.
I love it when the lawyers correct me.
In the last whereas clause, you might want to put in as amended as well. Is prepared to adopt the draft report as amended, dated March ninth, as amended.
As amended.
Good?
Good.
All right, when the lawyers speak up, I always listen. Good stuff. Thank you, guys. Okay, so now, just to reiterate, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls in special session duly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housick Falls hereby adopts and ratifies the report of the Village of Housick Falls Comprehensive Police Practices Review Committee dated March ninth, 2021, as amended and attached here too, as its final report in compliance with Executive Order 203. And just for the record, on page twenty, we're page nineteen, we're taking out the last paragraph of section six, or the last statement, the proposed makeup of the CRRB is as follows. We are striking points A through E. Point F becomes the end paragraph of point six, and then the new subpoints are listed out. Just want to have that on the record. And point two, the mayor is hereby authorized to transmit a copy of this resolution and final report to the New York State Director of the Division of the Budget to confirm that the process required under Executive Order 203 has been completed. I need a trustee to offer the resolution, please.
I'll offer that, Rob.
All right.
Second.
And second, Deb, thank you. I'm actually, Marie, I will save a copy of this just so I have it, and I'll email it to you, so I have all the changes. And I'll get that to you right after this. Okay, so offered by Bobby, second by Deb. Any further discussion from the trustees? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a roll call vote.
Okay, trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Marby? Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I was gonna say, did we hear from trustee Marby? We did. Good stuff. All right, great. It is fully approved, so that is great news. Members of this committee, thank you so much for the work you put in, diligence you put in, the attention to detail, the expertise and background you offered. You have done great work, and you have offered a great first step for our police department and our village. We really appreciate it, and we will continue to make sure that we support you as this process continues, and as we look to our next steps of making all of this official. Thank you.
You're here.
Thank you.
What's that, Marie?
If you could make a copy of that and send it to Denise, I'm actually out of the office tomorrow, and she was gonna take care of that.
All right, will do. Will do.
So I have it, but if you leave her a copy, so then she'll have it.
Okay. It's gonna, somebody gonna proofread you, Rob's edits. Hey, now, everyone can proofread it. It's online for forever. Okay, trustees, I had one other item of business that I brought to your attention, and I'll give the very quick summary again. We have along Waterworks Road, we have the new highway garage, we have the old highway garage, and we have the water treatment plant. And the internet and phone is something that we have been wanting to modify and or fix. The internet, we are stuck with Verizon DSL, because that's the only thing that reaches down there. And even though we pay, what I would say is a fair amount for DSL, the connection is spotty and inconsistent, which has forced us to do some other things and some other expenses to make up for that. We have been working as, on a project to see if we could get either Spectrum or Verizon to extend a line down Waterworks Road. The line basically doesn't go down Waterworks Road. I was able to, and Denise was also helpful with this. And I'm sure Marie is as well. Speak with a representative from Spectrum government side, and they offered two plans on how to do that and expenses. The quick version is the best way to do this was to send the standard line all the way down the road. The project cost for that, for installation, would be about twenty-six thousand six hundred, I think, was the the final step there. But for every location that you have wired in, they will take off five thousand dollars of the installation. So if we have five locations, it lowers the cost of the installation down to about sixteen hundred dollars. We are going to do that. We're going to do three locations, plus we are going to wire a location by the baseball softball fields, and also a location at the end of Waterworks Road past the water treatment plant, which would be able to be used either for the football field location or possible, possibly for the greenway. This is not a contractual thing, so we can turn these on, and after paying for a month, we can turn off what we're not using. This will allow us to get a strong internet connection to our three facilities, the old highway garage, new highway garage, and water treatment plant, as well as the rest of the road. We've looked at the cost side of this. This is the first step in fine tuning what we have down there, just like we did here at the village offices and the police departments. Everyone, in terms of the water and sewer, or water and DPW, is very much in favor of this, and will help a lot. And if we get this done before Friday, and by get this done, I mean, we approve this plan, and I submit the paperwork, it gets counted in their first quarter, which ends on Friday, which means the work happens sooner. That's the quick, quick version. Trustees, any questions or comments or thoughts on this?
I have two.
Yes, please.
One is, I don't, if you haven't already, if, if you want to reach out to Antonio Delgado, that's one of his big things is rural broadband. He posts about it all the time. The other thing is that if you, I'm sure there's a way around this, but if you set up Wi-Fi, right, or internet, and it's there for the football fields, for the baseball fields and all that, and you give them the code word, password. Does that mean they can get into the systems in the Water Works and stuff?
Um.
Do they keep those separate so that, no?
We would, if we ended up doing something like that, we would not be giving them access to the water side of things. In fact, our consultants, who does all of that stuff for the water treatment plant, he also did it for the sewer as well. He is involved in security and making sure that that stuff cannot just be easily hacked, because it is water.
Okay, as long as that's a possibility, I'm not, I'm not.
So if we opened up internet down there, we would not use the line specific to the water treatment plant, but I understand your thoughts and questions.
Thanks.
And I did actually have a little bit of assistance from the state, who looked into this to see if there was any easier way to do this. And this, this was the best way. So it was, it was actually kind of nice to hear the Spectrum did offer the legitimate best way and easiest way to do this policy-wise.
So, Rob, to that point, so based, yes, what you're saying is that we would initially pay for the hookup for the five locations, it would cost us approximately sixteen hundred dollars, right?
Yes.
We'd get credit for the twenty-five thousand. Okay, so we have to pay for the first month for each one of those locations, the five hookups.
Right, so we'd pay for our normal three, and we'd pay for the additional two. And after a month, we would basically just say, we're gonna turn these off, and they go, okay, they're off, and we start paying for those locations. But then they're there in case expansion happens later.
That. Correct. So we wouldn't necessarily be offering them to, as Deb said, the Little League or the Housick Football. If we do, it's our choice. It's not something we created to. We're just doing it to get the installation cheaper cost. So that being said, the, the price you gave us in the estimate was approximately, what, seven ninety-seven or something like that per month?
Yes, but that will change, and we have to, once we get the internet, it will allow us to consider, do we stay with paying? As an example, you know, our highway garage will need a phone and a fax. Also, obviously, cable TV for emergency weather and things like that. But it's possible that we could switch them over to what we've done here with the voice over IP, which uses internet access instead of hard lines. That may become a cheaper option. Another thing is the water treatment plant has been set up in a way where they'd never had internet access. Now that they have internet access, that may change some of the requirements. There may be one less phone line we need down there, because the alarm system may currently be using a hard-coded phone line, but it may now, with internet, change things. So this is kind of our starting point. This is what we'll be estimating right now. they currently be using a hard-coded phone line, but it may now with internet change things. So this is kind of our starting point. This is what we'll be estimating right now. Once we drop the two, uh, coverages and make further decisions to sort of get to a final landing point, that'll sort of be exactly what we are spending in perpetuity, just like how we did here. We added the internet so that we could get the phones, then we got rid of a whole bunch of phone lines here, and that's when we got to our end result and our cost saving.
Okay, well, that's what, that's what I was trying to find out because the number you gave, the seven ninety-seven, includes all those five locations, but it'll be reduced when we, we disconnect or when we shut off the other two locations.
Absolutely.
By approximately one hundred and twenty-nine a month, right? Like one twenty-nine a month?
No, I would. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I thought it was one twenty-nine for each, like, each location.
I feel like one of the locations is going to cost more because it has additional, um.
Okay, but ballpark.
I, I probably like maybe eighty or ninety per, for the two locations each will drop. So that's like another hundred and sixty to two hundred off. Trying to log into my email.
That's what I'm asking because, is. So, eh, because I went down and did a little research today with, with Denise to get our current cost for our internet and our phones, for the highway, the water, and right now we're paying approximately six forty a month for both locations. And if you're saying, if you, you, I just used eighty dollars, uh, each location subtracting from the seven ninety-seven, it'd be like six, so it's a wash and we're going to have good internet, which we do not have right now, which we do need.
Close, the, yes. The, the current plan, all we're doing at the water department is we're adding internet. We're not, and we're going to take away just the internet side of what they have. We're going to maintain the phone lines that are there. So it's not a complete takeaway of what we have there. Um, but once we get to the final solution, we will likely get rid of the, the, the remaining services at the water plant. But since we're also looking at updating some of the computers and software, we're going to try to do that all at the same time. But in terms of the DPW.
Doesn't Spectrum offer?
What, what's that?
Doesn't Spectrum offer the phone as well?
Yes, but if we switch from Verizon to the new Spectrum service and then we decide later to switch again to say a voice over IP because it's a cheaper option, then we would have to go through the porting situation two times instead of one time. So with the water department, we're going to basically continue the phone as it is now until we make our final decision. But for DPW, we're going to immediately go through the porting because that's the final solution for them.
Okay.
I know that's a little bit confusing, but.
How much more is the TV? I'm sorry.
What's that?
How much more is the TV add-on?
Um, probably twenty or thirty a month. Let me double check that. It's, it's, it's not all that much.
Really need, do we really need TV, especially with communications as they are today with cell phones and if they have the internet, what, what's the need for a TV? I can watch TV on my phone or on the internet as well.
Uh, weather channel in case of emergencies and, and then basically spotting weather out.
I mean, you can, the weather channel's not that accurate as far as this area goes, but I, I just don't see a need for it, but.
I think it's less than that.
Do they have a computer down there?
They, they do have the computer and the internet down there.
So then they don't need a TV. There's no reason for it. You can do the same thing on the computer.
I, I, I agree.
Let me get the official, uh, cost here. So one-time charges. If that's the way the board wants to go, that's fine. I know that they asked specifically for, uh, the TV so they have access to the weather. Um, but if you guys wanted to take that out, that's, you know, board discretion. I don't know, i- if we went that way, we would just, you know, entertain the motion to authorize the mayor to execute this with the, the changes of removing TV there.
That's okay. I'd just like to say that, um, in the future, when things like this come up, I think we should get this information a little bit ahead of time rather than have to read it in our email at some point in the day and then have to vote on it at nighttime so we can do a little research.
Yeah, this came together really late and the deadline of this Friday in the meeting, it just, we're sort of like, oh, we could actually get this done. So we threw it out there, but no, your point is taken. That's something I've, I've kind of been flubbing on recently, so.
I mean, even, even if the, maybe perhaps the guy from Spectrum could come to a meeting and tell the whole board about what's happening rather than just a, a few people or one person so we can all be educated at the same time on what's going on and have a better idea of what's happening.
Okay.
That, that sounds smart.
I'll keep that in mind for future. Thank you. I think that it's a seven ninety-nine a month for the receiver. Um, forty a month for the private business TV. I'm on page, um, five of ten in the, um, in the agreements, uh, new and revised services a monthly charge to Seven Waterworks Road. Uh, the static IP has to be there, the internet has to be there, the phone has to be there. We have that, understand that. So it's thirty-nine ninety-nine for the TV and another seven ninety-nine for the receiver. I'm not sure if they would have to have the receiver there regardless of the TV or not. So it's either forty or forty-eight dollars. Plus there is, I think, a one-time fee for the, no, it's not a one-time fee for the TV. So trustees, do you want to leave on the TV or, or nix the TV?
Should, Bobby. I'm in favor of removing it. Guys, like you said, with the, with the internet, like Kevin and Deb said, and I agree, with the internet, you don't, you can watch the weather channel on your, on the, on the computer or on your phone. And rest of the trustees, information you're going to get on TV.
Uh, rest of the trustees, anyone else want to voice up or voice therapy on that?
I'm okay with that.
Emily, what'd you say? I heard Kevin said, oh, he's okay with that.
I'm just curious, does the television, would the cable, is it run different so that it would work if the internet was out? Is that, was that their way? Okay, then.
Okay. Okay, uh, if that's the case, then everyone's in agreement. It sounds like I would need a motion to authorize the mayor to execute, uh, this agreement with Spectrum with the change of removing TV services at Seven Waterworks Road. Would someone like to so move that?
Could I, could I make a small suggestion that?
Yes, Craig, please.
Be authorized you to do this either way and ask you to remove it, but if for somehow it's a deal breaker, I don't want to be having a special meeting tomorrow to reauthorize you to do it with the TV.
Andy, that's fine, right?
Uh, that is okay. And I, and I think Craig's point's well taken that you'd authorize to execute the agreement without the TV with the provision that in the event the TV is a necessary, you know, bundle by Spectrum that the board would approve, including it on that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Craig. Looking for a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstentions? Alright, hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. I will, uh, get the revised plan. I'll talk to him tomorrow and get that moving and I will, uh, get on that. Any, anyone else have any business they want to bring up?
Mayor, just don't forget about after the meeting, me over here.
Yes. Fix my internet, please. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, hearing no, nothing else, I'm, uh, willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily.
Second.
Thank you, Craig. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carries, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, your help with this, being here tonight. Thank you, committee, again. Um, have a good evening.
You too, Rob. Thank you.
Go on. See you soon.